Thank you, everybody, for coming to a special meeting rather than regularly scheduled the second Tuesday or so this will be helpful, I think, to get through what we can tonight. And then maybe this may be our last meeting of the town year. And so that would be we take an ARPA break, as it were. We are we have one member of the public here, one member of the public on the screen. So with our member of the public here, an opportunity to speak if you would like to introduce yourself.
I'm Allison Tanner from Recovery Spa. I'm just kind of curious what the process is and see if I can answer some of my own questions.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Good. And Eric, I don't know whether you had any comments you wanted to make. If so, raise your hand or we will.
Can you hear me first?
Yes, I can.
Oh, thank you. I'll be brief. I'm in my car. I apologize here. I just want to thank everyone on the committee. You guys have done a really good job with your first phase. I thought it was a really good balance in terms of who received assistance. And I understand tonight you guys are going to be discussing Phase Two. And hopefully, in Phase Two, you will discuss the possibility of some of our youth sports programs in town being able to apply for funding. I know a lot of them, you know, due to canceled seasons or lack of fundraising ability have had some losses. So just wanted to, you know, hope that that's a discussion point as you guys move through the process.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much. And that's all we have for comments. Given that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the October 25 meeting. Jennifer distributed them. I will take a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October 25.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Are there any comments that people have to make? Changes, additions, additions? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And Brad abstains. Because you weren't here.
That's right.
All right. Under Old Business, we are finalizing the review of the applications. At the end of the last meeting, we had three applications outstanding for Recovery Spa and Allison Tanner is here. We have any specific questions there? Maritime Education Network and Sandra Roberts. And I hope everybody got the email communication that we got Sandra Roberts last week. So let me take them one by one on the Core Recovery Spa. Been back and forth with Allison. We got information from her relative to what some of the losses, some of the losses, what I would call projected losses having to do with COVID. If you remember what we've been trying to do with small businesses, however, is working with what I'd call the net loss. What was the, you know, there's also income associated with losses as well. At this point, I don't have a net loss for the Core Recovery Spa. I did get some additional information in this morning, but not ready to make a recommendation on them at this point. And I know there's still an interest and perhaps as we get into Phase Two, this will be an opportunity for them to come in at that point. On the Maritime Education Network, I've had email communication back and forth. They did not, haven't been doing fundraising, did not weren't holding fundraisers, didn't have any fundraisers that COVID interrupted during the period of time. And so we've come to the mutual agreement that although they would love to have some support going forward, at some point out of ARPA funds, they are, they recognize that they're not eligible under our current set of guidelines. And Sandra Roberts, she detailed for us what the uses of the $12,500 would be. Also identified the $6,900 that she's utilized as investment toward this project of creating a home based studio that allows her to get back to work after being interrupted by COVID. So those are the three that are remaining. I'd be happy to, we want to answer any questions moving forward. Open for discussion. Susan?
I was just confused a little bit because I couldn't find my previous paperwork that I had on this. What is the total request? For Sandra, make me.
$12,500.
$12,000. Thank you.
And she identified a variety of different contractors that she had coming in to do do certain work in order, that would be the spending of that. And Jennifer or Carl, you may want to help me. My understanding is even if that passes, we would not be in a position ultimately of providing a check for $12,500. This was effectively going to be on a reimbursable basis so that there's there are checks about the expenditures and making sure that that it happens that way. Is that, is that the way we're doing it?
I don't think it would be reimbursable. I think instead of paying, she would submit the bills here and he would pay them.
Oh. Okay.
But it certainly could be if she, it could be if she showed an invoice. I mean, it could be either way, I think. But if she showed an invoice, but I think that's what we were talking about is exactly what Jennifer said.
Okay, perfect. Any other, Liz or Maureen, do you have any questions, comments you'd like to make? All right. So my suggestion would be to follow the process that we did before. I would suggest that we make a motion tonight to approve the $12,500 for Sandra Roberts and to move that on to the Board of Finance and the Boards, or I guess our, our recommendation is to go to the Board of Selectmen. So.
Make a motion to approve that.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion?
So this is Kristen. So just, I'm sorry. I just got home from work and I just logged on quickly on my iPad. But so Sandra Roberts is looking for us to fund her construction of her in-home business?
Right. What she's looking for is, I would say, contribute to funding it. She's already put $6,900 into it. She's put in a request for $12,500. We asked for two things. One is a detail of what the money would be utilized for. And two, making sure that it met zoning approval. And so we did in a previous meeting, get information about the zoning approval. And last week she sent us the information about what the monies would be used for.
And I'm sorry. So and then just remind me, so she was working at a salon and she left to go home and do her own business?
And we, the salon closed as a result of COVID. And so the way, only way she could conduct her business was to create an in-home studio.
Okay. Just to. There's a lot of hairdressers that are doing that. And if one hairdresser finds out about this, there's going to be, we're going to get a lot of applications for people that want to work out of their house and put a salon in their basement.
Well, remember, this is all going to need to be directly COVID related based on what happened in 2020. So it's going to be hard, I think, hard to make that.
No, 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 I know. No, no, I know. I know a number of hairdressers who have worked out of their home and remodeled their homes in order to have, because, you know, because of COVID. So I'm just saying.
Good. Liz?
I was just going to say, I, I agree with Kristen. It could open the floodgates, but we've been talking about this. It's been publicized and the deadline's passed. So, you know, if, I'm not saying that I don't want to support everybody, but I think trickle in stuff regardless of what it is, restaurants or hotels or whomever we're helping out. We've, we've kind of passed that deadline.
Any other comments? All right. Let's take them all in favor. Please say aye. Any opposed? Maureen, is that an opposed?
That was an aye.
Oh, sorry. It was just the delay of the camera, that's all. All right. Good enough. So we are ready to go with that. All right. Let's move forward to New Business. First of all, let me report on a couple of things. Jennifer told me that in fact, the funds that we had approved before that had made it through town meeting, they're, they've been distributed and we did line. Well, I know of one. Yeah. So there's the, the funds, the process works, the funds do flow and we got that done. And the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen have approved all of what we did at the last meeting. And that they are on their way to the town meeting currently scheduled for November 28 at 6:00. So.
Six thirty.
Six thirty? Six thirty. So we will, hopefully, we will get those approved as well. And what we did tonight with Sandra will catch up with the processes at some point down the line. So that's good news. And then what we wanted to do for the balance of the meeting today is to say of the monies that we spent, and let me do a little bit of the math here. Let me just pull up. So if you remember the pillars, you know, when we first got together, we were talking about a set of pillars. We had kind of small business, economic resilience, health and safety and infrastructure is the four key pillars. And with the moving forward with Sandra Roberts' application tonight, we ended up with $273,000, $274,000 in the small business pillar, $393,000 in the economic resilience, which is really the working predominantly with the not-for-profits, health and safety, $446,000, and infrastructure, $567,000. So going back to the comment that Eric made, we are, you know, we've, we've had, I think, a fair distribution of the funds so far through the various different goals that the committee had originally set with the pillars. And we've spent approximately 1.6, 1.7 of the ARPA funds. So the, we have a balance of about $1.2 million of ARPA funds, which we are now, I think, need to create some guidelines as to what we want to do with those funds and how we want to, you know, how we want as a committee to move forward. So that's the balance of this evening's conversation. I know in our package, we have some information from the town relative to a couple of projects. But before we get to the, to Kristen, Maureen and Liz, what is in our package? Okay. Yeah. We will, we will try to do the baseball play-by-play well enough that you understand what's in that, what's in the package. And Carl, I have to say, I appreciate you having your company with us.
I'm not sure he has any say on that.
She's not really a lapdog, but she tries.
Working as hard as she can. Okay. So when we met last time, what we said was we wanted to spend some time creating what I refer to as concepts that go back to what we were originally talking about when we got together. And that the first thing we wanted to do was we wanted to help ameliorate damage done, impact of the COVID pandemic by, you know, small businesses, not-for-profits in town. And sent out the, spent the summer getting applications in at September 1 is the deadline for those applications. And have reviewed the applications and have made recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. Now I think we can stand back and think a little bit about some of the bigger picture items that we had talked about when we originally got together and say, you know, do we want to utilize some of our funds for those? Knowing that nobody around this table is an expert in any of those areas. My thought was if we could come up tonight with three to five, maybe closer to three than five concepts that we would want to have developed while, you know, over the next six to eight weeks, we would then be convened with whatever expert group we ask to work on these concepts to inform us about what, what's possible and what kind of investment would make a difference in, in these areas. And let me give you an example, just so you understand clearly what I'm talking about. I think there was a general consensus that if there were an ability to do something around workforce housing in, in town, we ought to take, take advantage of some of this money, be able to do that. We are not workforce housing experts, however, we do have, and we have helped with a small amount of money, Hope Partnership. And we could ask them to say, okay, we're interested in leveraging a project in town. What would that leveraging look like? What would, what would be helpful? How much would it take to be helpful? Those kinds of questions. Ask them to come in, in, you know, in January and, and talk to us about them. So that's an example of what I'm thinking about. But I'm sure there's others. Eric mentioned the idea of youth sports in town. And I know Liz, that's an area of interest that you have as well. So Laura is open for people to identify concepts, ideas that you would like the committee to get some more information on.
Stock COVID related, but I'm real concerned about residents with the cost of fuel this year. That, you know, I would think we'd be mindful of that. Oil prices, we're in the 530 range right now. And I think that that's something that we need to perhaps save some funds for. I think it's going to be a tough winter.
Sure. So we could ask Sue Consoli to come in in January and talk to us about where, where things are. You know, what's her experience with residents? Right. I mean, we would, we would clearly have some money in it. I think it's the kind of thing that ARPA funds are designed for.
Would it be appropriate to ask someone from Heat to come in and discuss, you know, maybe how many requests they're getting or how they're feeling that the impact is?
Susan said last time she spoke, I believe she said there was, she's given well through requests today. And that was a month ago. So, you know, a lot of people are unaware of oil prices.
Or they get their bill.
Right.
Or called.
You're paying for it now.
For the propane that many people, you know, wait until they get, the tank is lower and now it's really high.
I think if I'm not mistaken, that part of the social service request included.
Forty thousand, but forty thousand's not going to go far when it costs about 1,400 to build your tank now. So, you know, that's about, well, do the math, about, what, 70?
Four to good, four to five good months of heating the heat.
Okay. Well, I think that's, that's a great point. And we can, we keep an eye on that and ask Sue. I, I don't know enough about the social service programs in town to know whether or not is the difference between the work that Sue does and Heat. Are they?
Well, Heat is a nonprofit and it, you'll probably remember the big oil tank that's by Stop and Shop when you're coming into.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's the parameter of how much money they, they get donated to assist families in need for just for heating and repairing if there is a furnace issue.
Yeah. And, and they probably haven't been able to hold their fundraisers.
No, and they have this, you know, so.
Yeah.
But I think they, they often will reach, get requests from people that don't normally go to social services.
If I can, Heat, the Heat funds are under the auspices of social services now. I. I wasn't, so I don't know who is actively reaching out on behalf of Heat. But it's not really a separate fund anymore. I mean, it's a separate fund within social services.
Okay. Maureen?
I was just going to say, I'd love to hear what Sue Consoli has to say. I guess I kind of view ARPA as like sort of a special opportunity to use some of this money and invest in, you know, either things that have suffered, you know, due to COVID. And I, I'd love to, you know, learn more about what social services has to fill that particular gap so that we can use the ARPA dollars for its, you know, sort of stated purpose. So I think we should invite Sue in to that so that we can learn like sort of what she's got up her sleeves that we can, you know, see if we can fix that, solve that gap, you know, with stuff that she's got in her pocket. And then see if we can put ARPA, you know, to do some of the economic development kind of stuff that we were, that was one of our pillars.
Yeah. Okay. Good point. Go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, I didn't mean to talk over Brad there. Be careful when you say economic development. The ARPA funds are economic recovery. And I'm just, I know you know that, Maureen. I'm not trying to be finicky, but they are specifically not for economic development, actually. So, but I know Bruce and I have over the last year talked about an affordable housing project, which is a project specifically outlined in the ARPA guidelines. I think getting Hope in here and trying to do something in partnership with them is a, is a great idea. That's, I know we donated some money or allocated some money to Hope. But, you know, this, our town has had pretty good success with, affordable housing is the wrong term, but some market, some housing that is not market. And I think we should, I mean, it's such a hot topic right now in the state of Connecticut. And I think we should at least take a hard look at it. There may not be anything. I mean, it could just be an exploratory phase for six months to see if something can be identified. And if nothing can be identified, so be it. But I, I think that is a, a primary, should be, or should be considered a primary goal of the ARPA committee to get Hope in here.
Brett?
When somebody, when she's distributing responsible oil, 40,000, do we get any record on that? Or does that money just, as far as, do we, does she get the blank check, not a blank check, but a check for amount? And then she distributes it? Or do we know where the funds went, like the 40,000? Do we know where it was allocated?
So I believe how it's going to work for interdepartmental things is that there'll be a fund set up, for example, for the money that social services get. And it's just like how we do our bill paying now. You'll submit a request to finance, tell them what line item it comes out of, and then it goes into our system. So there'll be a record in our system of every expenditure that would happen out of that line.
So we'll kind of know how much oil or how much money has been spent on oil as time goes on?
You'll, we'll know, we'll know. If it goes, if there's a payment to Pennywise Oil, well, we will know that. As for actual names of clients, we won't know that. Because we, I think we try to consider the privacy of those folks.
Would it make any sense to have them apply directly? Or no? I'm asking a question that will suggest it.
Them meeting the clients?
Clients.
I think it's.
You mean, I don't know what you mean by that. Apply to Sue?
To.
To ARPA. I should think it would be easiest both on the town records keeping and for the line item budget. Once she, once we distribute that block of money that Sue takes care of, Sue Consoli takes care of the paperwork. I, I can't, I can't imagine having Jane Doe come in and realize, well, this is what you have to do up for the ARPA form in order to get a fuel. And then we have to do it 15, 17, 25 times over.
I wouldn't suggest something, just ask a question.
Yeah. No, I know. I mean, just, we're on record. So we likely will realize what we're thinking.
Okay. Other ideas? Liz, you want to talk a little bit about the sports fields and things?
I'm going to go in next week and meet with Johnna Paradise, who is the second-in-command for Parks and Rec. As people found out that I was on this committee, everyone, you know, because I have young children that play sports, you know, the fields are in terrible shape. This fall, my daughter's soccer team was practicing at Ferry Road, but it's built on a swamp. And then someone drove over it with a tractor and had so many divots in it that it were over on Maple Avenue, which is a terrible field. And it's just a wonder that people aren't spreading their ankles all over the place. Town park's not much better. And, and we go play other teams and we have tournaments in other towns on beautiful fields. And I know that we're a bit constrained by our shoreline and our available land. But I'd love to, before presenting any ideas to the committee, I wanted to meet with Parks and Rec, see what they had in the hopper. I know that they just got the money and had some plans that they presented to us that were funded from other places. So just wanted to see what the options were and whether it's new fields or just taking better maintenance of the fields that we have. I think anything that we can do, we all know that the mental health number, you know, the mental health crisis stemming from COVID with children is off the charts. And anything we can do to get our kids together and playing and doing something physically active and team building seems to be within the realm of what we're trying to do with this money.
Okay. And let me add to that, just to follow up on a comment that Eric had. Eric and I had a conversation a couple of days ago. And he was referencing indoor sports, particularly youth basketball and some of the issues associated with that. And so looking for concept, looking for people to work on it, maybe there's a, a youth sports kind of idea that we get Jonathan and others who may be engaged in this and say to them, you know, come back to us. You know, here's, here's what we're thinking about. Come back to us with some ideas and let's talk about what we can do going, going forward.
Yeah. Sounds good.
You can, you can plant the seed there when you, when you chat with them next week. You can, you can plant the seed there when you, uh, when you chat with them next week.
Yeah, you bet. I'll report back by email and then we can talk about this whenever we pick it up next.
Um, one of the areas that really struck, I think, a lot of interest around the table that we had to put aside, um, through the phase one process, but I'd like to at least put back on the table again was what I'll euphemistically call a, a business development center. Um, what we, you know, it, it was, there was a lot that was added into it, co-working space, the being able to have, uh, business assistance, uh, those kinds of things. I know, um, and looking around at, at other towns and what they're doing, some of it is being done, Judy, through, uh, in, under the auspices of the Chamber in, in those towns. And so there's, there's a lot of good ideas. And the question is, what would be, you know, if we wanted to do that, what would be a good idea for Old Sablebrook along those lines? And, um, I would, you know, I would put that on, back on the table and say, let's explore that and see whether there is, um, something that could and would appropriately be done in Old Sablebrook and could we entice some organization to do that, uh, with some more funds?
I agree, because I think part of the intention of ARPA was to make us make community more resilient should there, an emergency occur, and especially in economic, something that, 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 um, harms across the board the economy of the town. And I think that's the best way to fight that. I would even, even go so far as to add in, how do you do a training, uh, system for technical jobs or anything like that, because they're in such demand right now? And schools are really overpopulated, our tech, uh, vocational schools, our technical schools, and perhaps if we can get some way of of bringing it into a clamshell, so to speak, so there's one spot, people can figure out what to do. But I think in the long run, that would help any community, especially this one. Um, because we've lost our manufacturing industries, uh, years ago, decades ago. And we, we haven't even really, really recouped from that. So this is a high time. Let's go forward in the future, make sure that, um, anything that happens, um, whether it be a storm or, um, heaven forbid, another catastrophe like this, um, we would be better, um, situated, have a foundation to start.
Yeah, it could just go so many ways, right? Is it all educational? Or is it just training? Do we uh, partner with the community college, you know, people, organizations like SCORE and the Women's Business, you know, Development Center, there's lots of organizations that could help.
Right, well, that would be my next question, would be, who would we want to? And what's the question we'd want to ask and who would we want, looking at it, or do we kind of reach out to a, a number of different groups? I, I was thinking W B D C, the Women Business Development Center is a, is a possibility as well, because they seem to have a wide range of, of expertise.
Well, and they're doing that just thing so well, right, for years, uh, with the new one in New London.
The O S P R?
SBA.
Matt, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I know that, like, the, the nonprofit supporters do a great job in terms of programming. Um, I think that the, the East, Judy is at the Eastern Connecticut Chamber that just got funding to create a, a similar center in downtown New London, so. I think that Tony Sheridan.
Yeah, there's a, it's an innovation center that they're doing, similar to, um, I don't know if you know the one in New Haven, District New Haven, it's gonna be similar to that a little bit.
Great, thank you, Kristen. Yeah, so I mean, I think that in, in terms of like operators, I don't, I don't think from my perspective, that a, a SCORE or W B D C is as strong as looking at something like what New London's do, doing, or like down in Fairfield County, um, Haven is a, a women business focused group. Felicia Rubenstein has been doing a really good job with that, um, group, and they're looking to grow.
Okay. Other ideas, come on.
Well, I don't want to, uh, prevent further discussion on that topic. I like the topic, um. You know, we're not New London, we're Old Sablebrook, so we, I mean, we'd need to get a lot of advice on how to proceed on that, but I love the idea. Um, so two things, uh, Bruce and Brad, you both know that at the Board of Selectment, uh, Board of Finance meeting, uh, two weeks ago, um, when we were talking about funding, uh, some a, a new camera software, uh, townwide, which is, uh, all the schools and, uh, certain locations in town. The majority of the cameras are school cameras, though, the vast majority. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar request. Um, I suggested it come from the capital non-recurring account. I, I was not at that meeting, I was at a, oh, I was at the governor's debate, um, that night at, at the casino, and, um, so, uh, I proposed that a hundred and twenty-five thousand to get this townwide project, uh, done, because the town software program ends in, support ends in two thousand twenty-two, and the Board of Ed ends in two thousand twenty-three. Um, it was a hundred and twenty-five, I said it should come from the capital non-recurring account. My understanding is the Board of Finance suggested that it might be an opportunity to come from the ARPA funding. So, um, am I, am I right about that, first of all, Brad and Bruce? Okay, um, so, and I think they, uh, the message that I received was that it should come back to me to ask the ARPA committee to consider that funding. So, just so everybody's clear, um, the Board of Finance said, yes, it can come from the capital non-recurring account right now, and that is going to town meeting on November twenty-eighth, but please ask the ARPA committee to consider reimbursement of that one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the ARPA funding to the capital non-recurring account. Um, the capital non-recurring account right now has about one point two million dollars on it. We've actually been able to save for a few years pretty successfully. Um, the biggest dent that it would take over the course of the next thirty to sixty days, um, where we would encumber funds would be if we were able to get that Doc and Dine grant that we applied for, um, where the town committed about a half a million dollars. So, uh, that would deplete that account by a half a million dollars, but we put two hundred and seventy-five thousand to three hundred thousand in this account every year. This is an account, uh, Liz, for instance, that we would use to upgrade Park and Rec facilities or upgrade fields. Um, it's a capital account for non-reoccurring, non-reoccurring expenses, that's what it is. And we started this account about seven or eight years ago, nine years ago, and it's been very successful in helping us get a lot of projects off the ground. So, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, so perhaps in January, when we reconvene, uh, that project should be placed before the committee, i- is, that, I think that would be appropriate as a request from the Board of Finance. Um, and secondly, there's a twenty thousand dollar expense to, um, provide, uh, better power upgrades, more circuits for the town green, the new gazebo, in, uh, better information technology capability on, at the gazebo. Um, with the new gazebo, we want it, um, we want it to shine, and we don't want anyone saying, oh, I blew an amp out there, I wasn't able to perform because of this. If people want to be able to do some sort of presentation in the gazebo, we want them to be able to do it. In addition, when the Coast Guard Band plays every year, and also, uh, and Susan Esti, I think, can attest to this, and Judy, you can attest to this, during the art show or during other events on the town green, there's frequently a request for more power on the town green. That is a huge problem. So, I suggested that we put, um, at, at least twenty thousand dollars into upgrading the power and infra, information technology capability, um, on the town green for both the gazebo and the town green. And I also had suggested, and it will go to the town meeting on November twenty-eighth, but my understanding, and Bruce and Brad can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, was that the Board of Finance suggested those funds also be considered to be reimbursed from the ARPA funds to the capital non-recurring account. Am I correct about that also?
Yes.
Okay, thankfully, okay. So, um, all right, so I'm, I'm putting that before the committee. I know it's not a full committee tonight, I know we're missing some folks. So, uh, I guess, Bruce, I would ask that maybe it'd be placed and, on, onto a January, perhaps on a January agenda.
Right, but it sounds, it sounds like particularly if we would be moving forward on a reimbursement basis, timing isn't critical in that regard, right?
It is not critical, it is not.
So.
I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just, I was just gonna say that, so in my, in my mind, by, by pushing it to January and we, as a committee, can do kind of, by comparing to what, you know, so we've got these requests which could come out of the capital non-recurring, or if, you know, depending on what, what else is come forward relative to ARPA funding, maybe it's, you know, maybe there, there's funds available and we're ready to go there. So, to me, that's, uh, it, it gives the, kind of the whole picture, uh, and ability to develop.
Okay.
Right, I don't, like you say, um, I'm deeply concerned that we're not gonna have, uh, money back at the end of the year, this year, because of the increase in expenses. Um, you know, the cost of fuel and, and other situations, I'm, and I just say, if we get the five hundred thousand that we need to give down at the point, we're down seven hundred thousand, uh, minus these funds, we're down about five fifty. I'm just concerned that we can't depend on, uh, putting another two seventy-five or three hundred back next year.
Um, well, the two seventy-five is a budget line item that's level funded. It's not, I, were you saying, I don't think we can comp, uh, maybe you're saying we don't, we shouldn't count on surplus funds this year? Yeah, um, well, hold that thought, because there's a taxpayer in town who, um, is hundreds of thousand dollars delinquent, and, uh, that may be coming in, uh, before too long. So, let's hold that thought until January, but I hear, hear what you're saying. No action tonight. One other area that is a little bit less defined, perhaps at this point, and is not a sexy topic at all, and probably not something on anybody's radar, is uh, the Water Pollution Control, uh, Authority Project, um, where we are probably going to end up um, um, coming up with some sort of solution, either for the remaining properties, which let's just envision Chalker Beach and some of the properties that would go, uh, east of that, Indian, some properties in Indian Town, Sablebrook Manor. Um, and depending on what the total tally is there, uh, the ARPA, one of the stated categories for ARPA funding is, uh, sewer infrastructure, including, and, and water infrastructure, but sewer infrastructure is particularly mentioned. So, um, it may not be out of the question, uh, that I would come forth at some point and say, hey, we should consider funding, um, a load test on a certain property, like a water load test to see how much water a certain piece of property can handle. Unfortunately, we're not fully developed on that yet. We have a proposal into D E E P. Um, but I don't know how long it's gonna take for that person to review, uh, our plan and get back to us. Um, but it's something that's out there, uh, for sewer infrastructure, um. And, and again, that is, like I said, it's somewhat undefined. Um, there are gonna be basically two options with regard to the, um, the, uh, sewer-ing of, uh, the remaining properties. One of those two options is we're going to just take the remaining households, which is about six hundred, and fix those, or do we do something that goes into the Connecticut River? Uh, in other words, the two options are we either dispose of, uh, treated water in the Connecticut River, or we choose a location in town and dispose of it in the ground. Those are your basic two options. Um, obviously, if we go to the river, it could be a very expanded plant, where it would be a tri-town or mult, or maybe even more than a tri-town sewer system. Um, it could also be expanded in theory, townwide of Old Sablebrook, or Old Sablebrook would now have sewers. Um, these are some thoughts that are out there. They're, again, not totally fully developed. Uh, the ARPA money doesn't have to be, um, distributed until, or, or, uh, um, earmarked until the end of two thousand twenty-four. I know this committee is not looking to necessarily go to two thousand twenty-four. Uh, and not spend until two thousand twenty-six. But, um, it is a specific mention in the Treasury Guidelines, and I just thought I would dump it on your plate right now. It's something that may eventually come up for consideration if ARPA funds remain and if the town has a plan. That was.
But, um, good idea, and I, to me, if there were a way, if the town had a plan, and there was a way that, you know, ARPA funds could be used to then really kickstart it, that would be a really, you know, I, I think that is a, a good use of the funds, because it's been something that's been kicking around for what, twenty years?
Uh, longer than that.
So.
Or like thirty, thirty to thirty-five. I, I will say this much, Barbara Maynard in nineteen seventy-six started the W P C A Board Committee. And, um, as a result of identified issues in Long Island Sound, so you're basically going back to nineteen seventy-seven. And it's gonna come due soon, so, aren't we lucky? All right, thank you.
Other ideas from the committee? You guys have anything else, uh, that you would want to have investigated over the next, uh, six, eight weeks? Kristen, we can't see you. Are you, uh, are you okay?
I'm here.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm on my, hold on. Um, I haven't used Zoom on this so before, so I have to, are you there? Can you hear me?
I just want to make sure that, uh, for me going back and forth between the screen and the room, I want to make sure I'm giving everybody on the screen an opportunity to contribute as well.
No, I agree with the Hope and, um, I'd like to have more information on that sewer, so, situation, so.
Maureen, anything else you want to move forward on?
No, I agree with Kristen. Just wanted some more information on Hope and sewers and the sports programs. Yeah. Sports facilities, I think.
All right, so let me, uh, do a recap and make sure we're all on the, on the same page. So we've got, um, some, and what I'll call shorter term, um, interest relative to what's happening this winter around, uh, heat, and will be engaging with Sue Consoli to uh, find out, find that out and keep track of that, see what, uh, see if there's a need that is coming out of that. Uh, Hope for a, uh, give us some concepts around workforce housing. Uh, youth sports, uh, both, uh, indoor and outdoor. Uh, on the, um, economic, uh, resilience, um, thinking about business development center and various different pieces, and maybe Judy and I can.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a pretty broad.
Right.
Topic.
Right, and we can, uh, but maybe we could reach out to some people to give us, uh, some information.
You bet.
Uh, and then holding in reserve, uh, the projects. And for you folks who are online, uh, Jennifer will send you the, uh, two projects that the, the town has, has submitted and, um, and the W P C A. Is that fair here?
Um, going over just what we have, um, said here, one of the other topics that we had a lot of time on is um, health and especially mental health. So is that something that we wanted to include, um, after January?
Well, you could.
A lot of hours that was spent talking about that.
Right, and, and so let me say one thing about that, and that is, we, we have put a good bit of money toward that relative to, you know, the estuary for, you know, senior mental health, uh, for both at, um, social services as well as, uh, youth and family services. But I think it's, it's a fair question to ask and say, are, you know, are there other issues that, um, are beginning to pop up, you know, um, I think it was Liz who mentioned. You know, I think it was Liz who mentioned that, you know, youth mental health is a, you know, is increasingly problematic as a result of COVID. So let's, let's find out. Okay, any other ideas people have? One? Before we do that, I, I think we're moving in that direction very quickly. Any other comments from committee members at this point? I'll just remind folks, we will plan not to meet between now and the end of the holidays. So our next meeting will be in January. Jennifer, maybe what you want to do is, and so in that regard, let me just ask a question. Is Tuesday, or the first Tuesday, second and fourth Tuesday at 5 o'clock, does that still work for people? Or is there a, are folks interested in changing that time? Because this would be a time to do that.
Well, January 10th is the first, is the second Tuesday. It's the Old Sabre Chamber Annual Awards Dinner or event that night.
We won't be there.
All right.
We're all gonna be, we're all gonna be at the, at the Kate that night, I think, right, Judy?
Right, that's right.
I will be.
There you go.
All right, so we, we obviously have a conflict. Let me, let me ask the generic question, then we'll go back to the specifics. If it weren't an annual award dinner, is second and fourth Tuesday at 5 work? Anybody, it doesn't work here. Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll plan on that and maybe we'll, we could look at the first Tuesday in January.
That could be like the first, second.
The first is January 3rd.
Yeah, I think everybody will be in holiday mood and plus if you want to get the date. We will come back to you with a list of dates for first six months of 2023. And we just may miss that first meeting in January and plan on that. That'll give the folks working on these ideas some more time. All right, and with that in mind, I'll turn it over to Brad. Is there a second? There's a second? I'll, if we say aye.
Aye.
Okay, everybody.
Hi, everybody.